All right. Okay. All right, this is the Wellington Conservation Commission's meeting on Wednesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Calling to order our meeting at seven oh three. We have with us Carol Jordan, Marilyn Schreiber, Laura Rodriguez, and Nora Jones and myself Kathy Demers. Oh, and Jackie, Jackie, I see that's Jackie, want to try your audio just to make sure you can hear us?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay. All right, and Jackie Kulig is with us as well. Do we have a motion to seat Nora for Patty?
I make a motion to seat Nora for Patty, Marilyn Schreiber.
Okay, thank you Marilyn, a second?
I'll second Laura Rodriguez.
Thank you Laura. Any of any concerns? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so moved. All right. All right. Minutes from August twenty-first. And have a motion on those minutes?
I move we approve the minutes of the August twenty-first meeting as presented.
Second? Do I hear second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks Laura. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? So moved, thanks. It doesn't look like we have anybody with us tonight present to speak. Carol, any anything on expenditures?
No, we spent spent one hundred and sixty dollars here today, which was just the Cackawick and and CLCC memberships, and that's that's our all we've spent to date.
Okay, very good. And
No change in ARPA.
No change.
I'm aware of.
Okay, and I just want to get
You can be high by back.
Not yet, but we will be soon because we'll be ordering some lumber from Willards from the bridge. So our ARPA balance, ARPA twenty-seven fund balance continues at two thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-six cents is what I have, so I'd just like to note that in our minutes so that we keep track easily.
Kathy?
Yeah.
That Patty came in, should we change our motion and have Patty and have Nora seated for Bob instead?
Yes, go ahead Carol, if you want to make that motion.
Make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, who is that Laura?
Laura, yeah.
Okay, Carol and Laura. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? Okay, so moved, okay. So Nora, you're seated for Bob instead. Okay. Hi Patty, you want to check your audio?
Hi, I think you can hear me, right?
Yes, okay, great. Okay, thank you. Let the record show that Patty Phillips has joined us at seven oh six. All right, old business. Do we want to move up the open space opportunities to discuss that first? Did somebody want to make a motion to move that in the agenda?
I make a motion to move that piece of the agenda forward.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, that was Patty?
It was.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, abstained? So moved, okay. So let's get to open space opportunities. So I had let you know briefly that Mrs. Peddix had returned my email, and I can read her note to you. Basically, I told her that the Conservation Commission had decided to recommend to move forward on recommending to the town that we consider purchasing the property and that we were would like to tentatively offer a purchase price of twenty-seven-five. And that was based on the appraisal, which was thirty-five thousand minus the cost for removal of the camp, which we estimated to be about seventy-five hundred. And so, and I told her this was all contingent on the town deciding to approve this. So that was all contingent. So she said, Dear Kathy, I want to thank you and the Town of Wellington for all the work you've done to help make this happen. It's overwhelming and incredible. I would be willing to accept the town's offer of twenty-seven-five on the condition that the town will cover all the closing costs of the purchase. So the amount I will end up with will actually be twenty-seven-five. I would also like to guarantee that the town would designate the section purchased from me with a special name like the Drabney Sanctuary that's mentioned on our website, which would be included on our website and on a sign on the property that would stand up to the elements to be installed and maintained at the town's expense. It's important to me that the property be added to the Fenton Ruby Park and kept in a natural state for wildlife habitat and public recreation. And also that visitors to the park and to the town's website know that it is a place that was special to my husband and me. I would like the name to include both of our names. For example, something along the lines of quote, the Dean and Laura Peddix Sanctuary, because it was a place that we went together and we thought of it as a symbol of our love. The amount that the town is offering is very low, but the idea of it becoming a sanctuary is powerfully moving to me. She said, It's very hard for me to even write this because the thought is making me cry. I hope these stipulations are reasonable and that we can make this happen. Thank you again, Laura. So, a couple of quick things there. She has she is willing to accept that offer of twenty-seven-five as long as that's what she ends up being paid at the closing. When I look back at our prior closings, there's usually no other adjustments to the seller. She's already paid her taxes through the year. I did check with her, so she's already paid through the whole year. And there's no other costs usually to the seller except what they would pay out to their own attorney to represent them. And I did explain that to her in a follow-up letter that, you know, the town would not be able to cover the costs for her attorney fees, and she said, I understand that. So I guess on our side, what the town basically could do is to pay for the legal cost of putting the purchase and sales together. Because that's what, you know, we would doing rather than her attorney putting the purchase and sales together. Now here's Bob. Nora, we might have to bump you.
No bumping, no bumping.
Oh my goodness. I guess we'll have to unseat you too.
This doesn't sound right.
We're gonna have revolution tonight.
Yeah, that's interesting. I've never had that happen before, so. Bob, can you hear us? Can you put your mic on? Might be still getting himself together here. Hi Bob, can you hear us?
Let's not unseat Nora too fast.
I know. I see him here, but his microphone is still off. Hello, Bob?
He's working on it.
I guess.
There we come, there we go.
Yeah. Hey Bob?
All right, hi.
Hi.
Oh, there I am.
There you are, there you are. So we're, we seated Nora for you because he hadn't shown up for a while, so we'll have to unseat Nora unfortunately, but she was doing a great job. Somebody, I'm not sure how we do this.
I would, why don't we say what time it was when Bob arrived and and that he that he would then take Nora's place?
Okay.
We no longer need an alternate.
Okay. All right, so Bobby arrived at seven twelve and you took Nora's place. Okay. All right, I don't know that we have to make a motion on that, actually. Um, let's see. So we were just talking about the Peddix property. Uh-oh. Bob's gone. Bob, Bob's gone.
No, there he is, he's coming back, he's in the bottom now.
There you go.
No, no Patty's down there.
Oh, hi Bob.
Down there.
So we were just talking about the Peddix property, Bob, and that Mrs. Peddix basically has agreed that she would accept twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the property as long as she doesn't incur any other costs besides her attorney fees. And she also has requested that there be signage on the property that would basically say something to the effect of the name of the property would be Laura and Dean Peddix Sanctuary, and that we would note that on the website like we do the Drabney property. So those are her conditions, basically, at this point. It's not in writing, it's something we'll put in the purchase and sales agreement as well, but does anybody have any concerns about any of those? Contingents?
I thought you said Dean and Laura, I think she might prefer to have her husband's name first. Because she wanted, she had indicated in the past that that she wanted, you know, to recognize his memory in some way, so.
Yes, she did write it as Dean and Laura, you're right Carol.
And I don't would, if we put signage, we would probably put that down by the parking area as the same way as as we did with Drabney. Because
not going to be visible. I would think so.
Yeah, because it won't be visible to people because that that section of the park would be, it's such a remove from where where people come in that we can, we can put something about Dean and Laura Peddix Sanctuary acquired in such and such a year, whatever, you know, we can work on the wording and we might want to run it past her.
Oh yeah, definitely.
Does that, does that also mean that, I must admit that I don't usually go over to the kiosk and look at the maps, but will that be put on the map eventually at some point?
Yeah, I think we could work on adding it to our current map and then
Right.
bring up new maps.
Yeah, but there, when we say it becomes part of the park, it's not a separate parcel. So basically, when you say Fenton Ruby Park, you're talking about the original piece plus the the Drabney Sanctuary plus the Peddix property is all one part, they're all three separate parts, but it's all one entity, the that's added to the Fenton Ruby Park and Wildlife Preserve.
Right, it's just a section or an area of the Fenton Ruby Park that has its own designation, so an area of the park.
But I think signage at the the location where the other signage is and and specifying the date of acquisition would be appropriate.
Okay. Any other comments or? Okay, so to move forward with this, the next steps would we would take is we would bring our recommendation to the Board of Finance and ask them to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that they hold a town meeting so the town can vote on the acquisition and the use of open space funds. So I can put together a letter to the Board of Finance and ask to be on their agenda in October since their next meeting is tomorrow, so it's too late to get on their agenda, but we could do that in October. And, you know, I would go to the meeting, I would send the letter ahead of time so that they would have that in their packet. And then we would basically tell them what the costs would be, that would include the land, the cost to move the camp and what we anticipate for legal fees. I think we kind of estimated that when it's all said and done, we probably would end up, you know, paying out about forty-two thousand dollars from the open space fund. But basically, that's up to them, you know, what they recommend to move forward. We would just give them all the costs that we anticipate. So if yeah, go ahead.
So I'm assuming that all the other hurdles that we've talked about this point have been remedied?
Well
And that's why we're moving as we are?
Um, yes, I know what you weren't here at our last meeting, but we looked at all the options for removing the camp. The camp has been the roadblock. Trying to figure out how we're going to access it, and we did come up. I mean, there still could possibly be a way that legally we can use the discontinued portion of loose dig. But it's going to take some legal work to look back and do a title search to see if that property has, still has some legal access because of the way it was part of a subdivision in the past, basically. It was part of the property in Ashford.
Right.
But because it's going to take time and money to figure that out, we looked at what were the alternatives, and the alternatives were using Burma Road. And we talked to Public Works and Troy was able to look into renting a specific vehicle that's a tract vehicle that could go up Burma Road in its current current condition.
Right.
He can get the excavator up there as well, so they would take the camp apart and load it into this vehicle. This vehicle basically has a big dumper on the back of it, and it would come down and then it would put it in the dumpster. So we do have an alternative way to remove the camp. So we just thought, last time we met, that we could move forward and we, you know, estimated the highest cost it would, it would cost the town to remove the camp.
Yeah.
Kathy, do you think that Mrs. Peddix would do you think she'll come visit, and if she finds that that, if what you just described happens, will upset her because some of the, some of her memory places will be gone?
No, she completely understands that the town has to remove the camp. We have to fill the well with some sand because of safety issues, so she's completely on board with that.
She's, she, she won't be blindsided. In other words, you've had the conversation, she she acknowledges that that's what has to happen. That's good, that's good to know.
Yep, and she understands too that the town engineer recommended that we cut the trees on the dam. And that would be this whole process and Public Works has, you know, I have already got assurances from them that they can do that work. So.
And I believe the camp was already there when they bought the property, wasn't it Kathy? It was of the prior owners.
Yeah, and I don't think they really stayed in it. She said they would just come up for day use. So their their plan had originally been to take that camp down themselves and put up a house that they would use, like move out here, but they decided that it was just too remote. They didn't want to move out here. So. So if people are comfortable with moving forward, I did put together that draft motion that I had sent you. This is kind of just a general motion that we can use, you know, to say whether or not we voted as a group to recommend this acquisition. Did everybody have an opportunity to look at the one I sent? I can read it aloud if you'd like.
I just have one suggestion that we use, that we say acquire from Laura W. Peddix, which is the name of owner ownership that appears on the property card and skip the Mrs.
All right.
I think that just the the person's name is would be more appropriate.
Yeah, makes sense. Any other suggestions or recommendations on that motion? All right, with that, with that suggested change, let me read it out loud before we take a vote on it. The Wellington Conservation Commission recommends that the town acquire from Laura W. Peddix a seven point two-eight acre parcel of forested land, which contains two small ponds, map thirty-one, lot twelve, to be conserved as open space and added to the town's adjacent Fenton Ruby Park. Acquisition of this property is consistent with the Town of Wellington's Plan of Conservation and Development two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty-eight. This parcel is a priority for open space acquisition and natural resource protection. Such land is contiguous with three hundred and four acres of preserved open space in town and offers multiple resource values by expanding drinking water supply and watershed protection, forest preservation, climate resiliency, wildlife habitat, and opportunities for passive recreation. So move. Okay, Carol, do I have a second?
I second. That's Marilyn.
I'll second.
Very well written, very well written.
Yeah, okay, well, it's it's a similar motion that we used for the Talmage property, actually. I looked back to see. Any more discussion? I have Carol and Marilyn right now. Any more discussion?
Can I just say one thing? Do you need to name the the Fenton Ruby in this? It's
Um, it is. I
At at the contiguous with three hundred and four acres.
Of preserved open space, you mean of, you mean designating that that's the preserved open space?
You have above that it's Okay, adjacent, okay. Yeah, just didn't know if you needed to name it.
Added to the town's adjacent Fenton Ruby Park.
I wasn't sure if you needed to name it again, but.
Okay.
So was that?
Go ahead.
Is that the language that's going to be before the public to decide to vote for it?
Um, it might, it might be something more that when you go to the town meeting, it's pretty basic. It basically states something to the effect, like I'll tell you what, for example, what the last time when it went to town meeting for the Talmage, hang on, I'll just grab that. Basically, it said that that the town appropriate six hundred, excuse me, sixty thousand dollars from open space fund to use for the costs associated with the purchase of the Talmage Estate property on Mason Road, including survey and legal fees. That's what it ended up being drafted as the motion. That's what the Board of Selectmen had moved forward to town meeting. But usually what happens is we go to the town meeting and we discuss what, you know, what's going on with the property, we have maps, we show information, we're there to answer questions. So anybody at the town meeting before they take the final vote on that has an opportunity to comment, to ask questions.
Yes, I do remember having gone to that last one, I think it was for the Talmage property.
Okay. Do we also have to go to to planning and zoning under eight dash whatever? Yeah.
It's twenty-four, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the second piece here, so you know, this motion basically is going to say that the Wellington Conservation Commission is recommending this, and then we go forward to the Board of Finance, they move it forward to the Board of Selectmen. We also go to Planning and Zoning Commission and ask them to recommend the acquisition. And they also have to say in their motion that it is consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development. That's a state statute. So before a municipality moves forward by open space, planning and zoning also has to approve it. So I would set up a meeting with Planning and Zoning, and I would send a letter in advance telling them that that's what we are, you know, asking them to consider.
Kathy, wouldn't wouldn't it be better said to go to planning and zoning before going to finance?
Um, last time we didn't do it that way. You could, I think you could do it either way, I think as long as you get it.
But planning and zoning has to approve any acquisition of land by the town. So if you have that step done first, I think that might be, you know, just a better way to proceed. Just have that have that approval in place because you don't want to go to finance and then go to planning and zoning, say, huh? We don't want that piece of land. So I think maybe maybe getting that that legal requirement out of the way before we go to finance and then then that would also lend lend some support in presenting it to the town.
That's true. I can set that up as well. Planning and zoning has, you know, bimonthly meetings twice a month, so I can set that up.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, the idea Carol, because you go through all this work and if you can get through the first gate with a thumbs up, it'll make it easier when you have to go through the other pieces of committee.
So we can proceed that way. You know, our motion is today, you know, just recommending it, and then we can move that recommendation forward to planning and zoning as well as then to Board of Finance. Good comments, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, the tail end of that was for passive recreation, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
Yeah.
I don't, I I wonder if we just want to add passive recreation for the public. It sounds simplistic, but I know a lot of people, I've been talking it up on the trails because I've been seeing the same people that I usually see, and there's a lot of excitement about it.
Oh, good.
So if we just add for the public, I know. Just
I don't have that to anybody else.
I don't think, I think that's
It's kind of intuitive, but I think just saying it.
I think by saying that it's going to be added to the park and we have already have, it becomes part of the park and everything associated with that in terms of policy and goes travels with that, so to speak, so we're just extending that and and since we've made it accessible. Not sure how we would, how we would get a trail up there. We can't bring it in from the Ashford side, but you know, if people could could go up Burma Road if they chose to, and we know that people have because the Girl Scouts have done it. And one did it at one time.
Yeah, I mean, I think Patty, you're just asking to add that in so it's a little more definitive. The recreation for the public. I mean, I think that's, like you said, intuitive. Recreation would be for the public, but we can add in for the for the public.
But the recreation for the public includes people actually wading into the pond? Or is that going to be, is that going to be the kind of place that people will look at and say, nah, I don't want to go in there?
Well, I mean, it's kind of like the other ponds we have on the property. We don't have things that say no swimming at the at right on the edge, but we do say that in the kiosk.
Yes.
Being, you know, we're not going to encourage people to use the ponds for swimming. They certainly could stand on the edge and fish. They can go out and birdwatch and see if there's any on the pond or, you know, or walk around and sit, you know, we might consider putting a bench out there so people could sit.
Yeah.
Those are things, but you know, in terms of the verbiage, I, you know, opportunities for passive recreation for the public, I, you know, we can add that in if if people would like.
Yeah, we actually, that that brings to mind that we should probably have long since been looking again at the park management plan that we have.
Okay, but let's not get, let's not get
No, just 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 bringing that that up, that that there are things included and and we might want to look at some of the language that's in that part map, park management plan in conjunction with how we were and that should be, and we have to update the plan to to show that acquisition as well.
Right. So once that takes place, we could do that.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah. So do we want to add for the public or not? Show of hands, add the add the for public or not? Add it or add it? Okay.
My hand, my hand is up, you just can't see it.
Okay, so there's three of us, how about not add it? Raise your hand if you not want to.
Necessary. If we were adding it to the park, I think it would come under the existing, you know, park management and and we, you know, we don't know yet how we might tweak that to reflect the addition of this parcel.
I didn't see a hand from you or, and Patty, did you raise your hand? I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I did.
For or against?
For.
Okay, so there's three of us, and Marilyn, did you say yes?
Yeah, I said yes.
Okay. And then Jackie, how are you feeling?
I don't really have a strong opinion either way.
I don't have a strong feeling. I think I think it's I think it's very clear that we're talking about adding it to the park, would be the same, treated in the same way as other parts of the park and And, um, and it's, what we're doing at this point is trying to to, um, make it clear what the advantages of, and we're, this is a motion trying to sell the project. And it, and what we're here stating here is how the project might be used and what the benefits are of acquiring it. I'm, I don't have to feel that strongly either way, so.
Okay, well, when we just took a vote, we had four to three, um, and then, and and abstention, so we're gonna put it in. It doesn't really matter, it's not a big deal either way, so. Okay, so we're just adding it at the end, and opportunities for passive recreation for the public. Okay, any more discussion before we vote on the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That's a no, Patty?
Oh, I'm, no, no, I'm, I'm saying, uh, I unmuted too late, yes, I'm in agreement with it.
It's hard because I see some of you and I I can't see mouths move. On others, um, okay, and any abstentions? Okay, so moved, all right. Um, the second thing I wanted to, um, so I'll move forward and get in touch with Planning and Zoning and, um. Ask them to make the recommendation under, um, section eight dash twenty-four. And also go to the Board of Finance, uh, with the request and give them a background of all the um, funding that would be needed so they can move that forward. The second thing I wanted to talk to you about though today was I would like an opportunity to contact Halloran and Sage, the law firm that we've used in the past, um. Just to find out a little bit more about what legal services that we might need to to use to move forward. Um, I wanna find out, basically give, make sure they can give me an idea of what it's gonna cost to put a purchase and sales agreement together, title search. Um, and in so contacting them, I might talk to them about the issue with the road. Uh, the, uh, Lustig Road, so there may be a fee involved for that consultation. Um, you know, on the phone or if I do a Zoom visit, so I'd like to ask the commission to authorize me that I can do that and that we could use, um, our regular budget funds if needed, just for that consultation. Not for the legal fees that we'll need to do for the the purchase itself.
But just be more to get an estimate of cost of what the the the, uh, associated legal of legal fees would be.
Yes, yeah, you're basically authorizing that I can contact them to kind of just discuss where we're at and what we'll need to do to to move forward on this. I don't, you know, I think they generally, I'm not even sure what they were charging, Carol, maybe you remember better than I do. Um, it could be a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, you know, I don't expect it's gonna be big money, but.
Yeah, just keep it short, short and sweet, shorter and sweeter the better.
And you do it by email.
You're really on the clock when you, when you start dealing with lawyers, so.
Yes, you do.
And and to have, and have something in writing and saying, these are things that we think we need to do, uh, and, um, and and ask for estimated costs and and, um, that's what I, when with the purchase and sales agreement, I was, my advice for for Mike Tomato was fill in as much stuff as you can. Um, so that that, because it's, it, uh, it really does make a difference, because you're, you're paying you're on the clock when you're dealing with lawyers.
Right, right, so, I mean, we have a, um, a template for the last purchase with the Talmage family. We can just, um, adjust that. And it won't even be as complex because it has nothing to do with open space funding, um, from the government, you know, deep, so.
Yeah, we might wanna include the, well, we probably wanna include the naming, um, in the.
In the purchase and sales agreement, yeah.
That kind of thing, but it's would be less complicated by far. And there was some language in that that was was designed specifically to match language in it the acquisition of the earlier Talm- Talmage Park, um, property. So might might need to be tweaked a bit.
I mean, is that something that you might be willing to work on, Carol, to?
I can work on it with you.
A purchase and sales, okay, that'd be great. All right, but in terms of just giving me authorization to make that contact and there could potentially be a fee. Um, do we wanna make a motion on that? Because there could be a fee involved.
All right, I I I will try. I'm better at so moved when you've actually said the motion. Uh, but I'll make a motion, um, to authorize Kathy to meet with a lawyer and um, that we will pay for any, um, costs to that consultation from our funds.
Our operating budget.
Our operating budget.
All right, I'm just writing it down. Okay.
Did that cover it okay?
I I think so. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, Marilyn, thank you. And discussion? Okay, um, hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? So moved. Okay, all right, great. Um, Carol, the other thing I was gonna ask of you is if you wouldn't mind, uh, checking in with Finance and see where the open space fund balance is. So that when we do go to the Board of Finance, uh, we can be specific.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that would be helpful. All right, so that's good, I think we're moving along, hopefully, we can get everything in in place and perhaps even uh, look at closing early next year, so that would be great. Any other discussion on the Pettix property before we move on?
Great job, Kathy, getting it all together. And 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 dealing with the family, truly. A lot of time.
Yeah, at least we're just dealing with one person instead of, you know, three or four different people that are. That's hard.
Yeah, the fam- the la- family. A lot of, uh, interesting dynamics when you're dealing with the the number of, uh, numbers of the family.
Yeah, the biggest hurdle really for this project has been the whole Lustig Road access, honestly. So. Um, okay, moving on, um, since we're under open space opportunities. I don't have any more updates on that historic parcel on Jared Sparks Road, um, have not heard from the property owner since I did, um, have that phone call with her earlier this summer and, um, like I said, I will follow up with her a little later this fall, if I still don't hear back.
Kathy, I need to be excused, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Nora.
Okay, take care, everybody, have a good week.
Nora left, seven forty-one, okay. Um, next thing, we'll jump back to old business, any updates on the support for farmland preservation under item A? Jackie or Carol?
Updates from me, um, yeah, so.
Okay, no worries, Jackie, um, no, you're really busy. Um, one of the things I might just wanna throw out though is because this is gonna end up being a draft ordinance. Um, and it will have to go eventually, I believe, to town meeting, I think it goes through the Board of Selectmen and then to town meeting. It might be I don't know, if we can think about trying to get that done. And so it could be at the same town meeting that we're presenting the Pettix property as well. It just is cheaper for the town. If we can have a town meeting on, you know, both issues rather than on separate issues. There might be other town business that they have on the town meeting, but, um, it's just a thought. If we can maybe look at trying to get something done before the end of the year.
The or ordinances we've looked at from a J- from neighboring towns are basically taken drawn straight from state statute, it's almost. You know, uh, so I don't think there's, there's a lot of work involved in actually drafting the ordinances, um, if we can.
Bob, are you talking? Bob, we can't hear you what clearly, can you change your position or? It's pretty garbled.
Don't think we need to change the motion. I think it's.
If we're, you know, concerns about Nicole becoming town clerk.
Bob, is somebody talking to you in the background?
Connection here.
We're not hearing at all what you're saying, Bob or whoever's in the background, I'm sorry. We can, just garbled.
Yeah, I have no connection, I don't know if it's the weather or what, I've had a poor connection since I got on. That's why I shut my video off, it was just too much of a strain.
Okay, you're better now, we hear you now, were you saying something regarding what we just voted on or something else?
No, no, not at all. I just stepped away for a couple of minutes, that's all.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we could hear you in the background, maybe you were talking to Christine, okay, moving on. Um, so farmland preservation, so if we could try to work on something to get you know, something out there to the Board of Selectmen before the end of the year, that would be great. Um, so maybe they can move it to town meeting at the same time as we're doing the Pettix property. So, just a thought.
Might wanna weigh weigh the politically and, you know, whether I don't know, I don't know what kind of support, the people at the town don't think of Wellington as having agricultural property, farmland, farmland. But we do, and and I think that that's an opportunity, but whether it makes sense to try and combine those two things in the same meeting, uh, might be debatable, is something we can think on.
Okay. Collaborative organization news and communication. I did, um, hear back from Claire Kane from Connecticut Forest and Parks Association. Um, but she basically says they don't have a plan yet for the Nimmuck Trail reroute. But she'd get back to us when they did. And then, of course, under Kakiwick, um, just um, Bob, you might have to shut your audio off because we're getting feedback from Kakiwick, their annual conference is Saturday, November sixteenth, and that's gonna be in Bristol. Um, and we did discuss that any member who wants to attend could have their, uh, registration fee reimbursed. Does anybody plan on going or have you thought about it?
What was the date again, Kathy?
Um, it's November sixteenth, it's a Saturday. Oh, may it, do you, Carol, do you know if your husband's going, cause it's?
I don't think, I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
I don't have, I haven't looked at our schedule, but I I don't I don't know that they're aware of it.
Oh, okay, well, that might be something that I can make sure Mike puts forward to in the wetlands. Um, okay, properties management, Fenton Ruby Park. I haven't had any, uh, new reports from stewards regarding any issues at the park. Uh, Patty, are you aware of anything, any new concerns there? Okay, um, so the Boy Scout Bridge, uh, the planned repair date is gonna be October twentieth. Uh, Ken Fluid from the Boy Scouts is coordinating it. He's given me a list of all of the materials that will be needed. Um, he's gonna have the scouts there on the twentieth. He might even work with the scouts ahead of time to pre-make some of the railings that are gonna go on the bridge. And so what we discussed was, um, that I would go down to Willard's, I would order all the materials and I would have them delivered to Ken Fluid's house. Um, so that if he wants to work ahead of time with the Boy Scouts on the railings, the sections, that he could do that.
And Kathy, are we planning on using ARPA funds for that?
Yes, we had already voted on that, uh, two meetings ago.
Clarify.
Yep, so that'll be used in the ARPA funds. So, once Ken finalizes that materials list, um, I will go down to Willard's and order it. And then Ken is gonna let me know when it gets dropped at his house, he'll make sure everything is there, all the materials are there. So that I can let you, Carol, know, um, to tell Finance they can go forward to pay it. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, but.
Okay, all right, and so Mark, um, Sunday, October twentieth on your calendar, if you'd like to help out. Um, it'll be a matter of, um, taking down the existing railings, just hauling out the wood, uh, to the road so we can bring it to the transfer station and then, um, putting in, installing the new railings there. Um, it should go pretty quickly. And, you know, if there's other things at the park people wanna do that day, do some, um, brushing out trails, repainting some of the, um, uh, trail markers, uh, because that needs to be done on a few of the trails, we can talk about it maybe and, um, we have the paint, I can bring it if somebody wants to to do that that day instead of, you know, working on the bridge. I don't think we'll need a lot of hands on the bridge, cause there won't be a lot of room, um, but we certainly wanna be out there to support the Boy Scouts too. Uh, Nolton Preserve and the Talmage Conservation Track, I have nothing to report there. Town Development? Uh, Bob, do you have any updates? Or anybody else?
No, nothing's going on right now.
Okay, did anybody attend the, um, Economic Development Commission's open house at the library?
I'm sorry, I had, I had hoped to, but I ended up actually coming, coming home with my three-year-old grandson and babysitting him overnight, which was wonderful.
Maybe you'd be doing the triathlon that day.
I did, I did in the morning. Then I watched a three-and-a-half-year-old overnight. Maybe not the best decision. Three-and-a-half-year-old, absolutely, heads down. Especially when we could not find his stuffy going to sleep.
So anybody else had had any feedback? Okay, I'll, uh, check in with some of people from, um, EDC for our next meeting to see how that went. I have nothing under Regional Pollinator Pathway Initiatives. Anybody have anything there they wanna share? Regate regarding pollinators?
That garden looks really nice right now. Yeah, it's really nice.
I was down there a couple of weeks ago, I checked on the Frag Mities. And before I went out to the Frag Mities, I weeded out all the foxtail out of the.
Out of the garden? Nice.
Nice, thanks, Bob.
Yeah. Good to know, so, um, we didn't have to do any watering per se, did anybody water out there?
Water recently, but over the summer, nothing needed to be watered.
No, no, but I mean more recently, and it, it's all very mature and it's, you know, it's, it's at the end of, um, the season, obviously, I don't think we have to do anything there. Um, but I just wondered if anybody had gone out this summer to do that. I don't know if Connie did from the Girl Scouts or not.
I did not.
Okay. It looks like everything was hung in there, so that's good. Um, we've already discussed open space opportunities, uh, Wellington Wire. Marilyn, thank you so much for doing that lovely article on putting your garden to bed. That was awesome. Um, our next article is. Um, our next article is due the end, probably mid to end of December.
Oh, good, that's a long time away.
Yeah, does anybody, you know, again, it doesn't always have to be you either Marilyn, so if somebody else is interested in in writing um, a short. One-page blurb on some conservation issue. We have some time to think about that, so, but thanks Marilyn, that was a nice article. I learned.
You're welcome.
And I learned some new things.
Yeah, there's always something, and and um, Dave, Dave is always good at uh, coming up with an idea and then I uh. I just put it into the search engine and you wouldn't believe how many places there are to get. On articles on what the, what, you know, the outdoors and they're um, very efficiently written, it's um. And there's nothing wrong with lifting an article as long as it's uh, you know, people know that it's, I don't think Chris minds it all. Cause I usually always make sure that whoever wrote the article was mentioned in the, in the paperwork.
Yeah, I think it's important, you know, uh, obviously um, to make sure that you give credit. In the, at the end of the article for any information that we put out.
Yeah.
Great, yep. Uh, communications, I have no new communications. And as far as the open space and natural resource maps, I think we all had agreed that we're gonna. Basically put that on hold uh, for discussion until probably this winter, when there's not a lot of other things going on. Um, does anybody have any new business you'd like to add to the agenda tonight? Alright, our next meeting's gonna be October sixteenth, so we'll have a chance to meet before we do, we work on the bridge. Um, maybe at that point, we can talk about whether or not we're gonna um, get some refreshments. For that, but keep that in mind, maybe is um, for the twentieth. Uh, preparing some cookies, brownies, whatever, because we'll have a hungry Boy Scout crew. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn if somebody would like to make that motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
I second that.
Thanks Marilyn, okay, all in favor, say, or any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Alright, anybody opposed to, to calling it a night? Okay, seven fifty-five, alright, thanks everybody, have a good month.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Bye, bye.
Bye-bye.